At 5:59, almost six o'clock. Meeting practices and information. Before we begin, I would like to remind everyone that the board appreciates and supports stakeholder input in our meetings. However, it is important to note that a board meeting is not a meeting of the public, but it is a meeting to conduct the district's business in public. Everyone should have a chance to express their opinions respectfully within the guidelines the board has established for its meetings, so that the board is able to conduct the meeting efficiently and effectively. During the meeting, there will be time for public comment on both agenda and non-agendized items. Public comment is only conducted in person. If you wish to speak, please submit a written speaker card with the executive assistant. Members of the public may observe the meeting via NUSD YouTube channel or in person at the Newark City Council chambers. Do we have any public comment on closed session? Okay, thank you. We will be discussing in closed session pursuant to government code 54957, public employee discipline dismissal release and complaint. Conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9. We have one or two cases for that. Pursuant to government code section 54957.6, update conference with labor negotiator employee organizations, Newark Teachers Association and California School Employees Association, CSEA. Pursuant to government code 54957, public employee appointment employment. One title Assistant Superintendent Business Services, CBO. So, anything to add before we go into closed session? All right, we're ready. We'll be back. When we're back.
We're returning back from closed session and I'd like to report that the board took an action to approve the appointment of Ms. Knudsen in our Chief Business Officer position with a motion by Member Agüino, a second by Member Thomas, and a five-I vote. If you have any speaker cards that still need to be turned in, please do so at this time. And we are going to stand for the pledge. Chasleen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Meeting practices and information. Member Thomas, will you please read our guidelines?
We will keep our focus on the best interests of our students. We will work towards that future, learning from the past. We will stay focused on our goals and avoid getting sidetracked. We will build upon the ideas of others and look for common ground. We will paraphrase for understanding. When we have difference of opinion, we will debate the facts and not end the situation and avoid personal criticism. We will address processes, not persons. We will respect differences. We will never dismiss or devalue others.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled tonight from the agenda? Superintendent?
There are two items. I'm going to have to read out the terms and conditions underneath item number... The right one here.
Ten point... Is that ten point two?
Ten point two.
Okay.
And we will be...
And ten point one, are we pulling that since we're not... We don't have the contract tonight?
Correct.
Okay, great.
So if you can read ten point two to start off with, that would be welcome and make sure that we can inform the community.
And was there anything else you wanted to pull?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so approval of the agenda, all except for ten point one, which has been pulled. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. And a second?
One second.
All right, thank you so much. And a vote, please? Great, thank you. We have six eyes. Thank you so much. Excuse me. Member Chasleen, do you have a statement today? Great.
Good evening, Board members, Executive Cabinet staff, students, and New York community. Last week, we wrapped up our Dia de los Muertos celebrations with a lunchtime performance from our clubs, Mecha and Muerte Folclorico, highlighting cultural pride and student involvement on campus. AP exam registration closes today, and our counseling team has been supporting students to ensure everyone is signed up and prepared for May testing. to ensure everyone is signed up and prepared for May testing. Our annual Can-Fu drive begins next week to support the Viola Blythe Community Center, and classrooms are gearing up to participate and give back to families in need. For our seniors, we are continuing with college and graduation preparations, including cap and gown distribution, and last takes for senior portraits later this month, November 19th. In addition to that, today, seniors attended a fentanyl awareness presentation to support student safety and wellness. We are also excited to share that Mental Health Awareness Week will take place November 17th through the 21st, next week before... The week before Thanksgiving break. Our wellness team and student leaders are planning activities, resources, and support spaces to promote student well-being as we approach finals and the holiday season. In athletics, this Friday, we will celebrate Senior Night at our final home football game with a White Out Spirit theme. Senior Night recognition begins at 6:30 PM, and we look forward to honoring our senior athletes. Winter sports trials are beginning, and our student athletes are really excited for the upcoming seizing... Season. And looking ahead, we are proud to honor excellence in our athletic community. That's with the 10th induction ceremony of the New York Ring of Honor, the Athletics Hall of Fame will be held Friday, January 31st next year. And our comments at 6:00 PM. But for closing, I'd also like to kindly ask for a quick update. I know Ms. Allen isn't here, but a quick update on the progress for the POS program. Students are still very interested, and we know there has been an ongoing work and visits to other schools, as well as a survey they gave out to explore similar models. And any updates on next steps would be very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let's see, employee organizations. NTA? Okay, CSEA? All right. Public comment on non-agenda items. Ms. Parks?
Based on your discussion last meeting, it was disturbing to hear the district is going to continue to charge $450 for each of the 125 students who are not low-income at BGI, BGP, Lincoln, and Kennedy, while the families at Newark Middle School, Coyote Hills, and Schilling, who are also not low-income, will continue to attend Think Together at no cost through the remainder of the school year. Please note that ELOP funds cover the summer school program for both ELOP and ACE's students. This is not an equitable practice across Newark schools. Now, I'd like to address the ELOP expenditure slide as presented at the October 21st, 2025 board meeting. The slide outlined the 25-26 ELOP allocation expenditures and a reported $504,000 deficit, which, as I just mentioned, the district is covering by charging $450 per student fees at four school sites. However, I believe these figures warrant a closer look. At the September 16th, 2025 board meeting, the unaudited actuals for the district were presented. The documents I just provided you with contain the ELOP detailed financial accounting pages from that report, showing the ending fund balance of $364,169.40. This balance was not included in the slide presentation that you were given at the October 21st meeting. So, was that an error in your unaudited actuals presented on September 16th? If not, why wasn't the $364,000 ending fund balance... Why was it omitted from the recent ELOP financial picture? Adding that ending fund balance to the reported 24-20... Or 25-26 ELOP allocation would reduce the reported deficit from $504,000 to $141,000. Spread across the nine months and the 125 students, as referenced in your ELOP fee-based program slide, would require a fee of only $125 per student, not the $450 being charged. This discrepancy is not trivial. It directly impacts the affordability of Think Together program for Newark families, raises questions about the district's financial reporting. The Newark community deserves clarity on why this oversight occurred and how it will be addressed. Furthermore, if the fees being collected for Think Together were applied across the district for all students who are not low-income, the $125 per student per month would be even less. On behalf of the parents currently paying the $450 a month, I urge the board to take a second look at the ELOP finances, verify the status of that $364,169.40 ending fund balance, and recalculate the program's deficit and fee structure accordingly. These families rely on this program, and they deserve a fair and transparent process that minimizes their financial burden while ensuring equity across all schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Huffer?
Good evening, members of the board and Newark School District leadership. For those of you that don't know who I am, my name is Maria Huffer, and I am an employee here at the Newark Unified. And I want to start off with, I'm here tonight because I am both deeply disappointed and profoundly disturbed by the way my personal life and professional integrity have been discussed, judged, and circulated within this district. It has come to my attention that aspects of my personal life, what I do after hours, on my own time, and even while on vacation have been shared among district staff and board members. Let me be absolutely clear. What I do outside of the district hours is my personal business. For photos from my private Facebook account to be taken and distributed is not only inappropriate, it is a serious violation of privacy and a breach of professional ethics. So I must ask, what was the purpose of sharing these photos? What is the underlying motive? What did this individual or individuals hope to gain? And why did anyone believe that this was acceptable conduct? My social media and what I choose to post on it is my right, my personal life, especially when I am off-contract, away from the district duties, and on my own time, should never be subject to scrutiny, gossip, judgment by the district or anyone affiliated with it. To make matters worse, false accusations have been made about me, claims that question my character, professionalism, and commitment to my role. The implication that I work when I want, that I receive special treatment, or that my schedule depends on personal relationships is not only untrue, it is offensive and damaging. Let me state this clearly. I do not ask for favors. I do not receive special treatment. I take my pride in my work and my conduct, and I conduct myself with professionalism, integrity every single day. The fact that any of this has been discussed among district leaders, district leaders, staff, employees, is unacceptable, acceptable, and deeply troubling. So tonight, I leave you with these questions. Why did no one come to me directly? What is the true agenda behind this? What does the person or person spreading the information gain? And what was the purpose... What purpose does it serve to drag my personal life into district matters? Finally, I believe I am owed a formal apology for the violation of my privacy, for the distress caused to me, and for the unwarranted impact this situation has caused my mental and emotional well-being. I have served this district with dedication, pride, and professionalism for over 20-something years, and I expect the same level of respect, integrity, accountability for those who represent it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. It looks as though we do not have any public comment on agenda items. Is that still true, Ms. Anna? Thank you. Okay, great. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to share just a little bit of information with you this evening. Anna, if you could please put up the one slide with the timelines for the superintendent search. So at our last meeting, we discussed embarking upon this... We are planning on putting out the requests for applications to various search firms. This is the timeline that was revised, that we will be sharing with the search firms, as well as with the community. And so I just wanted to kind of bring that back. We have secured being able to come here to council chambers on the 6th of December so that you can conduct interviews. So thank you, board, for taking time out of your busy schedules to come together, especially at the holiday time. I know that this is important work that you'll be doing and embarking upon to find your next superintendent. So I just wanted to be able to publicly share those particular pieces with you and make sure that you have copies of those. We will also be posting on our website in case anybody else is looking at it to see, you know, if they want to join in the search process. That's really all I have for this evening.
All right, thank you so much. Moving on to new business, point two. Leading a statement in here, and the Newark Unified School District is offering an employment contract to the newly appointed Assistant Superintendent Business Services, Victoria Knutson. The term of the contract is for a prorated three-year ending June 30th of 2028. Annual salary will be $250,000. The work days will be 224 days. Health benefits on the same terms as other certificated management, early termination severance of three months. Certified management, that is the employee rank. Degree stipends will be the same as of any other certificated management employee commencing on the 27-28 school year if the board approves the increase in compensation. For other certified management employees, the assistant superintendent shall also receive the same compensation based on satisfactory performance. We are not presenting the contract tonight because we are pending a start date, and we will bring the contract forward on November 18th. Thank you. All right, moving on to old business, 11.1, Resolution 2025.26.09, declaring an emergency that requires procurement of construction services for emergency abatement and repair. Superintendent?
Thank you. Before you this evening is a document that we'll be using to be able to give a report back to the board. Staff has been working closely with Vergee to get the units ordered, to start their walk-throughs that will begin probably the week of the Thanksgiving break is anticipated. That's when the walk-throughs will happen, but we're commencing in December for several of our sites. One of the things that you'll see on an update probably in an upcoming board meeting will be the anticipated dates by various sites. As they are... After they do their walkthrough, they'll be able to give us a better idea as to how they'll be able to coordinate those efforts. But we do know that our first couple of schools most likely will probably be B Kennedy and the middle school, since they were the ones that embarked upon the emergency resolution that was needed with Cal OSHA. But the other schools will also follow. And so I hope that this document works well for you. If not, if you can give me some feedback, if there's something else that you think is missing here that we could help provide as we continue to tell what's being done, including the anticipated start dates, the completion dates, classroom units that have been completed to date as we bring this forward each time.
Okay. We do need to take a... Have a motion in a second to approve the continuation of this. May I get a motion, please? Oh, okay.
Yeah, so as I had mentioned in a prior meeting, and since I've already shared kind of most of my comments, I'll keep it brief. But again, I don't think that the contracting for this situation is appropriate. I really don't think it's an emergency. And the fact that not only have we been... Well, quite frankly, this was being worked on about two or three weeks before the board even heard about this indicates that it really wasn't an emergency. But now we have a contract amendment that's pushing out the delivery dates. And so again, if it's an emergency, how can we be pushing out the delivery dates? So I don't think it's appropriate to be declaring this an emergency and therefore avoid competitive bidding statutes. So again, I'd suggest that the board maybe reconsider and that maybe we go... We put this back out to bid. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Member Thomas?
I just received at the last minute some information from a community member or former staff member that some of the numbers for the units seem to be off. So I will share that information with you later. But my question is, does the number of units... If it were... If that number were to go down, would that impact the amount of work or any part of the contract?
If the numbers were to go down, it could impact it, but I think besides the units that are here that are being declared as part of the emergency work that we're talking about, there's other units that are also being worked on. So it's not... The ones that you have here are for part of the emergency element that we are discussing here. But there are other units, I believe, within the district. So I'd have to go back and see what information you're talking about, talk with staff about it, and make sure that I can do a comparison.
Right. I'll share that information with you, but it seemed to revolve around unit counts before the closure of music school and that they... Those unit counts are similar to the unit counts we're getting now that should not include music school. So I just want to give you a heads up that the question was asked, and I'll share that information with you later.
I think staff will have a response for you. We did talk about the fact that music was in the initial Cal shape contract and that we have to now declare that would be a site that we're not using. But there may be other units that for the emergency work actually needed to have assistance that were just not working well.
Okay, thank you.
All right. May I ask for a motion, please? This is on 11.1.
Yeah, I can. And my understanding was that the change on the completion date was a result of a typo from last time. Is that correct? There wasn't actually a change?
Yeah, I don't think we've even gotten to that item yet, but yes, that is correct. So just in going back to that particular item, when that item comes up, I'll be happy to address it a little bit further.
Okay.
But it was a typo when Mr. DeFridus gave his presentation. He shared with the board that the work would not be completed on the controller replacements until the end of March. We are asking for that March 31st date instead of the February 3rd date. And then for the Cal shape contract as part of the RFP and all the work that we've done with them, it also included that that work would be completed for Cal shape portion by August 3rd.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve item 11.1 then.
Okay. May I ask for a second?
I'll second.
Oh, all right, thank you. Thomas seconds. And can we please take a vote? Oops, sorry, I clicked it too fast. Let me just... Chasleen, are you going to vote on this? Thank you. All right. We have five. One no. We are now going down to consent agenda, non-personnel items. Would anyone like to pull an item to discuss? Member Hill?
I'd like to pull 13.3 and 13.4, please.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, go ahead, Member Hill.
So both of these contracts are connected to the emergency resolution, and so I'd like to pull them separately because, again, I don't think that this is something that we should approve under the circumstances.
Okay. Then I'm going to ask for a motion for 13.2, 13.5, 13.6, and 13.7. Could I get a motion for those, please?
I'll make a motion to approve items 13.2, 13.5, 13.6, and 13.7.
Great, thank you. And a second for those items?
My second.
Thank you. All right, we are voting on 13.2, 13.5, 6, and 7. Thank you. All right, six eyes. All right, and 13.3. Did you have anything else you wanted to say, Member Hill?
No.
Okay. Can we vote on both of them at the same time? All right, great. Could I have a motion for 13.3 and 13.4, please?
I'm of approval of 13. I'm of approval of 13.3 and 13.4.
Thank you. And a second?
A second.
Thank you. And vote. All right. All right. We have, and one, no. Thank you very much. All right. Let's see. We are down to Board of Education Committee Reports, Announcements, Requests, Debriefs.
Aren't we going to introduce?
Oh, yes, we are, but I'm sorry. I just like sailed past it. I truly apologize. I should have done it back at 10.2, huh? And nobody yelled at me. You guys are too polite. All right, Mike, go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you. So it's my pleasure to introduce Victoria Knutson. Victoria is an accomplished school business leader and nearly two decades of experience in public education, finance, and operations. She has served as Assistant Superintendent of Business Services and Chief Business Officer, providing leadership in budget development, fiscal accountability, and strategic resource management. A graduate of University of California, Santa Cruz, and a business, School Business Leadership Academy certificate holder through Monterey County Office of Education, Victoria brings a strong foundation of both financial management and educational leadership. We are thrilled, and I emphasize thrilled, to welcome Victoria Knutson to the Newark Unified School District as our new Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. Welcome, Victoria.
Welcome. Sorry for the delay.
Well, this is, thank you. I wrote a little speech just to say good evening to the Board and to their superintendent and our members of the community. It is my honor to be here tonight to meet each one of you and to begin sincerely thanking you for this opportunity to be with Newark Unified and also entrusting me with this, this, this task, this job. I know what I have to do, and I can't wait for the challenge. So thank you.
Thank you all for keeping me on my toes. I apologize that I flubbed up on that. All right. Now we are off to Committee Reports, Announcements, Requests. Let's see. Member Hill, I'll start with you.
Thank you, President Jones. So two things. So first, regarding our, our new CBO, so welcome. And I, I just want to echo what Mr. Williams has said, that, that you, I think that you're, you're a fantastic candidate and choice. And, and so we're really excited to have you come on board. But I also would like to show appreciation to the, the members of our team who participated in this process of, of finding you and bringing you on board. And so Superintendent Vacar and Mr. Williams, so thank you for your leadership in going through this process and taking us through this process. And then Member Block, you know, thank you joining, joining me from a board perspective on this. And then I also would like to thank Kim Ortiz, who we had brought in as the project manager to really help kind of drive the day-to-day execution of this. And I think that we put together a template that of, of how we can have for really strategic decisions, personnel decisions, a way to have not only great, high-level staff input, but also board input, and, and then also to have somebody that really manages the process to, to make sure that, that we really beat the bushes and find the best and the brightest. And I think we've done that in this situation. So just want to thank everybody, and we look forward to working with you. So that's number one. And, and then number two, per the, the earlier public comment from Ms. Parks, I'm wondering if the Board agrees if we could ask the superintendent and staff and just to take a look at the ELOP situation and see whether there are funds actually available that we can potentially, you know, rebate back some of the cost of the after-school care. So if the Board agrees that we can have you look into that. Great. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Thomas?
Yes. Welcome, Ms. Knutson. We are so pleased to have you onboard and can hardly wait till you start. I also would like to state that I think some of our, you, Jasleen, you mentioned it, and students that were here, I'm sure are concerned about pause and what we're doing with pause. So I think if, as soon as we can have another update on the situation with, with meeting the requirements of pause or the, the goals that pause has for our student, and we can, students, we can put together a plan that, that meets those needs.
They've been putting together the plan, and that will be presented to you shortly coming up as we had, as we had promised the community and the Board that. So I know Ms. Allard is working with her team on that and with the school. They've been out visiting sites, and together they're coming back with a proposal.
Okay. And I think I had mentioned at one time and asked if the Board could get copies, you could, you could send them to us of the WASC report. I'm working on the master schedule, and that report might have information that would be helpful. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
President Jones?
Yes?
President Jones, because I'd just add one thing. So late, late-breaking, Member Thomas, I just heard this from Mr. Williams, although these students might, might be interested in pause, but apparently the other reason that they were here is because it's a part of their civic engagement connected to their, their government class from Mr. Crosby. And so, so we got a twofer.
Oh, good. Member Block?
All right. Then I'm going to shout out Mr. Crosby because that's a great idea, and I'm going to steal it from my government class. So I appreciate that a lot. It was great to see students there tonight. I also just want to welcome Ms. Knutson. It's really great to have you joining the district and looking forward to having you joining the team. So thank you.
Member Aguiano?
I echo with everything that my fellow members just mentioned. Really appreciate everyone being here and also the civic engagement. It just really shows a lot of the, you know, just youth participation in the community, and I'm really excited to see that happen and occur across the board. And Ms. Knutson, I really appreciate you being here. Thank you. Welcome to Newark. We're really excited to work with you, alongside with you, and with the Cabinet team, and we're just really thrilled to have you. Feeding off of Member Jasleen, she mentioned something earlier about a canned food drive. If we could go ahead and participate in volunteering, helping out with Viola Blythe, organizations, partnerships that we have here. I know the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts are working on that as well. That's a really intricate part of the community that, that we take a part of, and really excited just to see how much hands and volunteer and hearts that we could go ahead and have in the community be a part of this. Just to really just wrap up, November is National Homeless Youth Awareness Month, and just to mention is to learn and, learn more and raise awareness in regards to homelessness for our youth. There's a lot of our children that are experiencing, you know, living doubled up, and we have to make sure that we're addressing these, this, this particular cause that is causing our families to really, it's hard for us to expect them to be here, especially with chronic absenteeism, but we do not know what's happening in their communities and their homes because of this. So to raise awareness, and thank you to all the businesses, the partnerships, organizations that are participating in helping, supporting with food and also groceries for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The last, the only, the thing I wanted to mention was the Governance Handbook, I didn't hear back from any of you, so I'm assuming that everything was kosher. That will be on the agenda for November 18th. If you have any last-minute oops, I didn't have a chance to look at it, which is totally understandable, please get back to me. We've, there's a couple of things that still need to be finalized, but that will be on the agenda for the 18th. Otherwise, Ms. Knutson, we are so glad you are here, really excited about that, and excited about your excitement, because that will be really infectious in the office. So that's, I'm really pleased that you're not only coming for the job, but you're also bringing your enthusiasm, which will be really great to have around. So thank you for coming, and we look forward to that start date when that can get ironed out. And again, thank you for making the effort to come tonight. I know you've got a trip home, so. And with that, I am going to, I haven't forgotten.
Okay, making sure.
15. Heading off to superintendent. Last-minute comments?
A few last-minute comments. A couple of things. I want, I want to thank staff for the work that they've done. I know not all of you agree with the emergency resolution, but it has truly been taxing on all of us to try to be able to respond and be able to help our schools, especially when it's hotter. I think it probably felt like it was more prevalent at that time. Now that it's getting colder, we're going to start, you know, hearing things about that as well. We still believe it was necessary because of the Cal OSHA element. And so for us, we, after discussing it, we still feel like we are upping the timeline here to be able to bring a resolution back and do it in an affordable way that, that makes sense. So I do want to thank staff for all their work that they put into this. They are diligent. It is something that is daily that we have a discussion around. And then weekly, they will be meeting with the project manager from Vergee to be able to update and find out exactly what's going on with the various units of the different sites and the anticipation when they're coming. And again, that, that grid that we have for you will continue to get updated. You'll start seeing some additional information coming out on that. And lastly, I really do want to speak to our community and to all of you about the importance of food securities. There's just a lot of concerns. We hear it on the news. We, we hear it from our families. We hear it from our children when they're standing in line and they're getting lunch or breakfast in the morning. And for some of them, it's the only meal that they're getting. It's a good nutritious meal. You heard our Food Services Department talk about what they're doing to be able to ensure that there's high-quality foods that are coming into what the children eat. We want our families to know that we're doing everything to find additional resources to be able to bring to our families. We do have some market nights that we're able, market days that we're able to bring in and bring in fresh fruits and vegetables. Today, staff was working on a response to an application to be able to get some additional resources. And then to speak a little bit about two things. I think the chronic absences that are happening still, maybe because of what's happening right now in our nation. And then also with regards to families fearing to share information about themselves. It really is concerning. It's going to have an effect on all of our budgets here in the state of California. With that, we are going to be forming a coalition with some of our local school districts to be able to go talk with our representatives here locally about the impact that has on us and how we're a little bit unique compared to other areas of California. Along the Bay here, people think that money's not a problem. Well, money is a problem. And having the right kinds of resources for all your families is still just as much of a problem here. And, and when we're not able to be able to provide the proof to the government to show that we have the need because people are afraid, we feel like we need to have a conversation with the rest of our legislators. I'm going to be asking each of you to help me in this endeavor, something I think we need to speak up on. I hope to have some student voice on this particular issue because I think it's so important, so valuable. I think those thoughts and for our legislators to be empowered with what's impacting us here in our communities, they can't make change if they don't hear from us. And so we need to speak up, and we need to speak out. And so now is the time to do that. And so I look forward to helping with that effort here from Newark Unified. I look forward to bringing together a team and talking about what that looks like from a writing as well as from a vocal campaign as to what we need to be able to support our schools with the funding that we need to provide all the services to our families and that they so deserve. And most importantly, the impact that it has on our students and their learning. So I wanted to share those things with you as we, you know, move forward to the, getting ready for the 18th meeting. It will be right before Thanksgiving, and for those of you that maybe don't tune into the 18th meeting, I want to just wish everybody a very happy holiday. And please, if you've got the resources, be able to share your resources with Viola Blythe. Our boxes and tubs will be delivered here soon, and we would ask for your assistance in whatever it is you can share.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any other last-minute comments? All right. I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 7:40. Thank you. Is it really 7:40? It is.